Thank you.
The meeting of the Maryville Town Council for February 11th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Let's rise for the invocation, please.
Let's pray. Our God and Father, we thank you for the opportunity here tonight to think, to plan, to dream. Father, our desires are for stronger families, stronger community. Father, we ask that you keep the vision fresh in our eyes, in our minds, in our hearts. Father, we ask for protection upon those who serve us to protect our daily freedoms. So, Father, again, we pray for the wisdom and knowledge of those who will be making major decisions tonight. Father, bless them with insight and wisdom for the betterment of this community. Father, that we can be a community that serves you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
It's remain standing for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, would you please take the roll call?
Sir. Councilman Spann.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman White.
Here.
And President Bella.
Here.
All accounted for, we have a quorum.
Very good. Are there any petitions, communications, acknowledgements, or remonstrations this evening? Hearing none, we have the consent agenda before you. The accounts payable registered voucher approval for February 11th, 2020, and also the approval of the town council meeting minutes of January 28th, 2020. Would like to thank the clerk's office for actually typing those minutes verbatim. He included all of the residents' concerns from Maryville Lakes, typed out for us word for word.
So vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to standing committees tonight, we have Budget and Finance, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President, I have looked at some data. The most current data I have for budgets are 2018. I'm waiting for 2019 to come in and I'll have a more clear report for the next meeting.
Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, the Public Works Committee will be having a meeting set down with Steve and we're also going to be inviting Stormwater over to go over some possible future projects, future needs. We're going to be meeting on the 18th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mrs. Uzalak.
No report at this time.
Moving on to Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes, I had a meeting yesterday with one of the, one of the people from the Board of Works, Kevin Markle, and it was regarding an employee. But I think we came to a real good conclusion and that's what our meeting was about, workmanship.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Marge.
Sure.
Moving on to Public Safety then, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting with the Police Commission in upcoming advertised executive session coming up here shortly, and we should be reporting back to the town hopefully soon.
Very good, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes, I spoke with Jan about the parks in the 4th Ward, and they were getting something together for the Crescent Lake Park, I think with Matt Lake. Was that the Army Corps of Engineers that they were supposed to come in and weed it out, Matt?
We actually had Cardinal, our contractor, come through with a marsh master and clear it out. They've been spraying the frag mighties there. Then they're going to seed it with native plants, and then they'll come back and then re-cut it, and then by that time, we're going to have our own marsh masters, so we'll be able to handle all that on our own without, without a contractor. So we'll do all that in-house.
I just wanted to make sure that that was being done before spring.
Yep.
Which it was. Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Uzalak. Moving on to Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you. I had got a letter, sorry, I had got a letter from, actually an email from Matt Lake pertaining to a retention prime behind Hickory Hills, a prime complex. Matt, if you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, we, we had a preliminary survey done on the Hickory Ridge Lake apartment property. It's private property, but there's very few, very little opportunities up in the north end to create storage. But we had Christopher Burke do that preliminary work, and what we would need is an easement from the owners of that complex. And so we created an easement agreement, and we drafted it up with an exhibit. We emailed it out to the manager to pass along to the owners, and if we can get that easement secured, we can move forward with full-blown design for that project, and that will tremendously help the intersection at 56 in Grant, which is a perpetual problem of flooding because of lateral six when it comes up, there's no storage there.
Thank you. Also, I attended the Stormwater meeting on February 4th. They held elections. Matt, would you like to tell them who the president is and those others?
Yeah, the president is Bud Christ, the vice president is Ralph Simic, and the secretary is Barbara Ghostin.
Thank you, sir. Also, there was other discussions about Bonner Lake, and there were a lot of strategies or scenarios where they wanted to deal with why is so much moss, or why is it so much algae? Some of the ideas that I heard were pretty good ideas, and some was kind of a little not where I want to be with it. But in any case, we're still trying to address that problem that they have in there, and I think Matt's probably have a lot more information about that than I do.
Yeah, we had our contractor come in that treats Bonner Lake. They've had tremendous success with the non-toxic diet, but they're still adding other chemicals to the lake, and we want to look at biological controls possibly. And one of the recommendations from them is to use tilapia. Tilapia naturally will eat a lot of algae, and it's not like they turn off, they're constantly eating algae. The problem is they don't overwinter, so they die at the end. So you're spending a fair amount in the thousands of dollars to introduce tilapia in the spring, and then they'll feed throughout the season, and then the winter, they go belly up. So, so we're looking at, you know, what are the options? Is that, do we try that one season, see how it works out? But they feel if we increase the biological control, we could reduce the chemical control, and maybe the costs can level out, so we could maybe try it one season. So we're still discussing that, and they're going to send us a proposal, and we'll look and see what the best option is there.
Thank you, Matt. Also, reporting from the Solid Waste Management District, I did get a contact from the Solid Waste Management District. They did say there's a report that's due. Basically, the report is called Retract. I designed it about like six years ago. And what that, that particular program does is tells you all your, your reporting requirements, like your bottles, your cans, and those things. And that is what helped us keep our $196,000 grant coming. So we got to get on that really quick if we want to get that grant.
I, I appreciate that. Our office has been in communication with, with them as well, and we've collaborated with Kevin, and it's been principally through Kevin working with Steve. I believe that report's finished and submitted.
Okay, then we'll be able to get our money. Thank you, Matt. Lastly, I want to get with Matt, because I want to find out what's going on with the compost facility. I want to see how that operation's working, what we're bringing in, and what we're, what we may be taking out, I'm not certain, but in the near future, maybe sometime the first week in March, I want to get with you, just take a ride out there to find out what's going on with that. With that said, there's no more reporting that I have for the environmental affairs.
Very good, thank you, Mr. White. Moving on to elections, public relations, and Census 2020, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow night at 6:30, we're having our first of our series of meetings with as many residents as we can in certain groups. Tomorrow night's meeting, we've invited all of the property owner associations that are located here in Maryville to come in, receive information. As many of you can see between Mr. Minchuck and our Clerk Treasurer, Kelly White Gibson, he has got a bumper sticker up there. Mr. Bella, Jan Orlich, Pat Reardon, myself, Marge was there, Mr. Hardaway was there at our last census meeting, getting the notice out that how important the census is to the town of Maryville. Mr. Bella has issued challenges to our adjoining municipalities that touch our border, including Gary, Sherrville, Crown Point, and Holbert. They have all accepted the complete count challenge. So tomorrow night's meeting will be with the Property Owners Association. A week from tomorrow night will be the Democratic Precinct Organization. All the precinct committeemen like myself, I believe Councilwoman Uzalak and Councilman White are precinct committeemen still. We will be meeting on the 19th, and then on the 26th in fair and bipartisan ship. We were, are inviting our Republican counterpart precinct committee people to a meeting on the 26th so that they also can help spread the word about the importance of the census. There will be yard signs that are being manufactured. The bumper sticker that Mr. Minchuck has up there, I believe Mr. Bella is being placed on all the town vehicles, correct?
The banners came in today, or yesterday too.
Banners came in across, two across Broadway, one in location right here by Town Hall, the one normally we put up near Stracks by Andrain on Broadway. And again, all the yard signs. I don't know if we've gotten an update on the T-shirts.
They've been designed, and they should be ordered this week.
Okay, and then those will be for all town employees to wear every Friday from now until April 1st, and maybe even longer. So I think that will cover, did I miss anything from committee members that we talked about?
No, just to add that Holbert and Crown Point's been talking some smack about beating us in the response rate, so I think we need to mention that and remind Maryville residents that we don't want to lose to a neighboring municipality. So it's quite important to fill out your form when you get it. You should receive those around mid-March, I think, Jan, or second week of March, is that right? Because Census Day is technically April 1st, and we'll have the form before that, so it's really important. We're having some fun with it, yes, but it's all to increase awareness of the importance of it, so.
One of the, a couple of other things, Mr. President, for the workshop, we have a workshop next Thursday, and one of the things that we have always done, and, and I have taken the lead, and I would defer to yourself, and you and I can talk about this. Matt Lake has always done an outstanding PowerPoint presentation on the state of the town. The state of the town is scheduled for March, I believe it's the 3rd Tuesday in March. I don't have my calendar open, I think it's March 17th at the Chamber Meeting, which is at Gamba's Restaurant, and I always, in the past, have made the presentation on the state of the town, what's transpired in 2019. So any of the council members, see Pat or Linda if you want to attend. We've had department heads, Sheila, Joe, they get together with Matt and they give all kinds of, we give all the information and statistics, and I've been doing that with the Chamber since I don't know how long, so that's coming up. And I would be remiss, under acknowledgements, Mr. President, as you guys know, I am pro-Andrain, and I want to congratulate the girls' basketball team for winning another sectional title Saturday night, and they're on to the regionals against Bremen next Saturday in Winnemac. So, good job by the girls. That's all for that committee, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit, but please keep talking as you're next.
As I always love, you guys know I love to do, under economic development, we did have a redevelopment commission workshop, and we discussed several things, including the food and beverage tax, and Mr. Hardaway's been in contact, as has Mr. Reardon, with State Representative Vernon Smith. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to give the town manager, the town attorney, and hopefully the entire town council will endorse this, to move forward with the town of Maryville 1% food and beverage tax in conjunction with the city of Gary's food and beverage tax that Representative Smith is going to be trying to introduce into the General Assembly yet in this session. So that is my motion, Mr. President, we can discuss.
We have a motion, Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway, to endorse the 1% food and beverage tax for the next general, for this general session.
And that would be a 1% food and, local food and beverage tax for the people in, in Maryville. We would keep that. Mr. Svetnov has given us legislation that this would be used for economic development purposes, which could include things out at Century Mall. We've been discussing the possibility of the convention center. We heard a presentation and discussion tonight from Rich Dubey at Trilland Properties. So I think this is, this is well overdue. I personally, it's supported the Lake County food and beverage tax and thought, from an economic development standpoint, it was an ideal situation. You know, for example, the residents in the audience, you spend $50 on a meal, you're looking at 50 cents additional. A lot of us that have the disposable income that can afford that, probably tip more than that anyway. So this will come back into the community. It would be for the town of Maryville, separate from the city of Gary, would have their own distribution, but this needs to be taken care of. And as I alluded to in the workshop, Mr. President, as a member of the Board of Directors at the Chamber, I will be reaching out to all those businesses tomorrow morning at our board meeting and asking them for letters of support. Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Reardon indicated that letters of support are desperately needed very quickly to get this thing going and get it into Representative Smith's hands, so you can take him down to Indianapolis.
Okay. Any other discussion? Joe, is the motion, worded okay? We good on that?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Pettit.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to Utility Liaison, Mr. Spann.
Yes, I'd like to take this time to mention the fire department. Went to a fire department board meeting, and they're requesting a three-ladder truck. They have a two-ladder truck, and it, it's, it's kind of dangerous for them when they're working on these tall apartment buildings and all that. And they normally call Gary for their three-ladder truck to get on top of that fire, get that water down in there, and it actually saved damaging the apartment buildings and structure of that nature. So I'd like the council to take note of it and maybe bring it up and have a discussion on it.
Okay. Pat, let's add that to our Thursday 20, the 20th workshop.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Spann?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to abandoned properties, Mr. White.
Mr. President, we had a meet, held a meeting at the, for the abandoned properties last week, and two of the issues that we talked about were two houses that were in Ward 7. It's on like 59th, 58th and Tav Street. Most people that went by there have seen that building sitting there, or that house sitting there for years with a tattered tarp over it. It used to be all the way across, now it's just that, I did get a chance to actually get out and look at it, and found out it was not just a home, it was like a duplex more than a home. So I did talk to, and I did talk to Vicky about it, and she said that she would look further in it, but she's having a difficult time finding the ownership of that particular property. So I don't know if we can't get it fixed up, what will be the next step? I don't know if we'll demolish it or not, but I know it's been a eyesore for quite some time. Secondly, on 68th Place and Cleveland Street, there's a white house on the, on the corner of the southwest corner, yes, the southwest corner, I'm sorry, southeast corner of 68th Place and Cleveland Street. That house looks pretty bad as well, and it's a wooden house, so I'm not certain it is, even if it's rehabilitable, because we have a lot of flippers out here, and they didn't seem to be interested in flipping that particular property. So those are a couple of properties that we're looking at right now. No additional report on that, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I know we've got a lot on the agenda, and Mr. Hardaway started this committee several years ago, but it may behoove all of us, because we all have them in all of our wards, that we set aside a special workshop that Joe, and we invite Mr. Geekus in and Vicky, and we get some teeth, because we're, it seems like the agenda comes out for blighted and abandoned buildings, and we're, we're going through some things, and Joe, I don't know what the code says. We got to have a more aggressive action on some of these buildings. For example, the one in Leonard, that's right across from Wright Manor, I go in there with my in-laws, that tarp has been on there, Leonard, I would guarantee you at least seven years, at least seven years. It's ridiculous, and, you know, how long do we let these people do, you know, go? Because they're, they're degrading the adjoining property owner's property values, you know? So, I don't know, just a suggestion for, not this week, not this workshop, we got a lot, but to get just for, for that issue alone, because when Rich started this committee, I think we had almost a list of like 350 houses, didn't we, Rich? Something like that, in the seven wards, so for a variety of reasons.
Sure, okay. Anything else, Mr. White?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you. Town Identity and Beautification, Mrs. Uzalak.
No report, but it's a new committee, and we haven't met yet.
Okay.
So I guess we will pursue it first.
Okay. Community and Recreation Center, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Pettit. I know there's a report here.
I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay, I'll probably defer a little bit to Steve too on the progress of, of the center. I know that we're all receiving emails from Andrew Farmer at Core Construction. There's an onsite camera that you can link into to see what they're doing. They're in the process right now, driving peers for the foundation of the community center itself. I think the main water line is being installed. Steve, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Um, as far as the committee goes, Leonard and Jeff and I met, Mr. Spann was there, Mr. Bella was there on the 6th. We went through the PowerPoint presentation as we are gearing up toward naming rights for the facility, as well as individual components of the facility. We haven't really put a price tag on the individual rooms or courts or things like that, but the main PowerPoint presentation that we want to take out to the one large donor, I believe, is ready, and we're trying to schedule that meeting to see if we could sit down with them and talk to them. To that end, Mr. President, I'd like to move my meeting back to February 27th at 5:00 PM. In that meeting, we're going to finalize the menu of, if you want your name on the court, if you want your name on the rock wall, if you want your name on the fitness center, et cetera, we need to pick out the dollar amounts and then go out and talk to these larger donors, as well as I'd like to start getting into the operating budget of the center and what we want to adopt as a, as a budget to operate this thing staff-wise, and insurance and electricity, and take a look at all that. I know Jan's kind of run through some of those things, and we need to tweak that here at this meeting and at a couple of future meetings, so when the doors open in February or March, we're ready to roll, so.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Okay. Moving on tonight to general orders, I don't think we have any ordinances, is that right, madam? Clerk Treasurer?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Then we'll go down to item B under General Orders to Resolution 20-02. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the disposal of certain real estate located at 6680 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana, and all matters related thereto.
Delmo for the resolution, please.
Chair will recognize Mr. Pettit, second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Minchuck? For approval of Resolution 20-02. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Comment?
Mr. White.
I believe it's a good idea, but at this time, I don't have enough information on it to make an informed decision. I'd like to learn a little bit more about it, because I just got that one time that I looked at it. So I think that's my position right now, I don't have enough information to make an informed decision.
Any other discussion? Sorry? I don't think we need any more explanation. Any other questions or comments for the council? Hearing none then, a roll call, please.
Sorry. Councilman Spann.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman White.
No.
President Bella.
Yes.
Okay. Six yeses, one no, motion carries.
Six to one, and motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is more for, I believe, informational purposes. It's Resolution 20-03, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, reestablishing the Cumulative Capital Development Fund pursuant to Indiana Code 36-9-15-5. And I would like to introduce Tricia Hudson, who is in the audience tonight from Cinder and Cinder, who's helped us prepare the steps we need to go to, to reestablish this fund, which the town has really had for a number of years, right? Would you mind approaching and giving us just a real, little summary? Nothing like putting you on the spot, right?
No, that's all right. She's finishing at the end of the cold, so excuse me. As most of you are aware, Center and Company is the financial advisor to the council. We advise on some budget issues and then various questions as they arise throughout the year. So we prepared for you based on a question that was presented to us, some information about the cumulative, cumulative capital development fund. It is a fixed-rate fund that's been in the town for a long, long time. Most municipalities in the state use it. It is set aside, the monies raised, the levy that is received, is set aside for capital improvements, sometimes emergency equipment. There's a variety of things listed in the statute that it's for, but things other than payroll, personnel, those, those things are operating in general fund money. As AV's value, as AV values increase, the assessed values increase, the percentage on that tax kind of levels out, it goes down a little bit. And so every three to four to five years, the municipalities are suggested to reestablish the rate, meaning taking it back to the maximum. At this point in time, again, based on that leveling process, Maryville is at a .0398, so just barely under four cents per $100 of assessed value. The maximum allowed, based on the current status of the city, of the town, excuse me, is five cents. So you're just over a penny shy, again, on every $100 value. We approximate that to be based on circuit breakers, which are released in April, so this is partially an estimate, that, that the town could have in 2020 garnered another 180,000 plus in levy, if in fact, the rate had been at the full five cents. It is important to know that as this reestablishment process happens throughout this springtime, it then becomes collectible for next year. It is not something that would be paid already in this year's taxes, so it is a forward-looking receipt. But again, you can plan then for some future building projects or some particular things that you need to do, looking in then in 2021. We prepared a, a little breakdown for you, and hopefully you all have that packet to show the effect on the homeowners, because that always is a question of, are our taxes increasing? Again, this is a tax that's been in place, so is the tax being raised? Yes, it would be inappropriate to say it's not, but it is again a tax that has been there. And what you'll see on the median price of a value of a home in Maryville at just about 175, I think it is, that that tax increase for the entire year is just at about $7. Let me pull up my form to make sure I quote that correctly, please.
$7.14.
14 cents. So that is less than a dollar a month that a homeowner with a, a home value of 175,000 would see. A home, as you see listed there on the chart, and I'm looking at the, that chart that is orientated lengthwise here. A market value home at 100 would pay an extra $2.87. Once a home value hits 200,000, the circuit breakers are in effect, and that person is already maxed out with the cap, so any home value over, it's actually 195, 500, would not pay any additional tax at all, which is why you see the zeros in that column. And those tax caps with the circuit breakers have been in effect in Indiana for a little while now. What other questions can I answer for you?
Kelly, anything else? Oh, maybe the process and timing, sure, thanks.
Sure, absolutely. So it's very particularized by statute for the state of Indiana to be able to reset this, to reestablish it to the maximum rate. The drop dead deadline for everything to be finished up is April 30th. So we need, I'm going to talk backwards so that you understand why it's important to have this public hearing in two weeks at the meeting. That April 30th deadline is for all of the paperwork that the town has processed through to be filed with the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance. Prior to that time, there is a 30-day period allowed for any remonstration that happened for the citizens to file with the auditor of the county. There have to be 50 or more people signing a remonstration to file an objection. Now that objection doesn't mean that the reestablishment is killed, it simply gives them an opportunity to file an objection, and then the DLGF will evaluate that. So that puts us back to the end of March, but we need time for the auditor's office to process the paperwork. We need time for them to give that remonstration, either declination that there was no one, or the signatures, a few days prior to April 30th, so we can actually take it to the state, excuse me. And so that puts us up a little bit into March, and we also need some time for you all to consider what's happening, which brings us back into this last meeting of February as our suggested date for the public as our suggested date for the public hearing, for any of your constituents to voice their concerns or approvals, their objections, whatever it might be, ask questions and things. And then give you all some time to consider that process.
And I think, Trista, you also provided some form letters for us to use for our public notices. Is that right?
I did, yes. We provided a pack of information at the end of last week, I think. It sets out that calendar for you. It also includes there at the bottom when you would receive the levy, so you can plan to use that if in fact it's passed. And then some different things. Of course, notice has to be given in the paper. There are two notices that are required. So we would suggest a notice for next Friday and the Friday after, to give your constituents time then to be prepared for that end of February meeting. And then we've given the forms also for the auditor's form and the resolution and things for you to take a look at. Again, those are suggested forms based on what the DLGF recommends pursuant to statute. The resolution, certainly, you can adjust within reason, of course, making sure it still complies with the statute. But those have been prepared for your review also.
Our office has sent those notices already, so they will be published Friday.
Very good.
I do have a couple of questions. Is this evaluation just on homeownerships, or is it the entire town of Maryville?
It's on the entire town. The analysis we gave you was asked to the homeowners, because those are your, I don't know if it's fair to say the meeds or constituents, but the people that come to you. The businesses also, of course, are affected by the levy. And their percentage is a little bit different, though. To get into that kind of a detail would have taken us quite a bit longer. And we wanted to make sure that you could at least answer for your homeowners very quickly what their effect might be. The business tax caps can range either at 2% or 3%, depending on the kind of business. Homeowners are at 1%. So there's a little bit different analysis to be done there.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't need any direct action this evening? Is that right? Joe and Tris? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions for?
And we're available always by phone and email if any of you do have questions going forward.
Great. Thank you for your work on this, and also, Kelly, your office for having the meeting and taking care of it. So, Joe, do we need to have a motion to remove this from the agenda tonight? Or table it? How would we just table it, right?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
If a motion to table Resolution 20-03 until the appropriate time. Questions or comments?
This being capital CCD, this is for capital only.
It is.
So everyone understands that this does not, does have nothing to do with payroll, salaries, increases in salaries, raises, what have you. This is to buy hard stuff. Is that correct? This is set off?
Correct.
Capital, right? Trista, it's capital.
And I think, and I think Trista covered that earlier, I think, in the presentation.
Huh.
But thanks for pointing it out. Anything else? Hearing none. This is on the motion to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We'll table this until the appropriate meeting. Moving on to BZA actions. Are there any tonight?
No BZA actions.
Okay. Any old business before us? Mr. Span?
A comment. Mr. White mentioned the Bonner Lake. You're a little new, but they spray that every spring. They have to. Public Works sprays it. They can't do it in the wintertime. It won't take. And they have to be very careful, because it could kill the fish there. They spray it in the springtime. They roll out there. You know what I mean? Two guys on a boat and they're spraying and stuff. And we don't really have concerns with that hardly anymore. But just to let you know, it gets taken care of in the spring. So people can't complain.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman Span. Also, I noted that that particular Bonner is actually not a very deep lake or pond ever had wants to be identified. But I think that's what caused some of the problems. I think I talked with Matt briefly about it. I definitely know about nutrients and how the sun and make all these algae-type situations appear. So I definitely agree with you. But I would like for Matt and his crew to continue to pretty much work on it until we get some type of solution, because there's other complaints from the other side over there that you don't have on that side. So no more questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Span.
Any other old business before us? New business? Any new business tonight?
Mr. President, I have some.
Mr. Minchuck?
For those of you who know me, I'm a bit of a Maryville Pirates fan. Just a little dig in my colleague across the way there. Just wanted to give a...
That's why we had you separated.
Just want to give congratulations to the Maryville Pirate Wrestling Club, who won their regional championship. They got it. They got some good-looking qualifiers going downstate, so we'll definitely keep an eye out for them.
You got 10 going downstate.
Yeah, I thought it was 10, wasn't it?
Super.
Yeah. We'll stop talking about homework.
So I think, Mr. Reardon, you and I should get together and prepare the appropriate proclamations and honor these teams at one of our upcoming meetings. How will that be?
I'll skew it some time. I think we're going to do bigger and better things.
Yeah, I mean, you could wait.
All right, that's good.
You should jinx that, huh?
But are you, Jeff, you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One thing from economic development, though, Mr. Bella, that I would like to point out, and it's probably been on the back of everyone's mind, but now, today was the installation mass of the new bishop at Holy Angels. And therefore, as you know, my agenda, one of my five items, is the status of Andrayan High School. Now, personally, mine will be gone in 2022. They're talking about 2024. The rumors on the street of down to 231 and 65. From a redevelopment and economic development standpoint, as the bishop gets his feet wet, we need to start engaging him in finding out what is the status going to be. That is up in Rich's Ward. That's going to affect everything, I think, north of 61st Avenue, a lot of those businesses. If that's an empty 50-acre tract, that needs to be on all our radars. And I will let you know from an economic development standpoint.
Just to clarify, you're referring to the relocation of Andrayan High School?
Right.
To the south?
To the south.
And actually leaving the town of Maryville?
Possibly leaving the town of Maryville.
Here's to Clark.
Over my dead body.
We're having a funeral, man.
I don't know. We have to talk to the bigger girl, boy. There may be a caucus in Ward 6. You guys might get lucky.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Kelly, would you please read the announcements tonight for us?
Certainly. There's a Planning Commission public meeting February 18th at 6:30 P.M. There's an Environmental Resource Committee meeting February 20th at 2:00 P.M. The Redevelopment Commission meeting will be here at, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, February 25th at 6:15 P.M. And our next town council meeting will be also on Tuesday, February 25th at 6:30 P.M.
Thank you. I got so excited, I jumped ahead on the agenda when Mr. Pettit mentioned vacating his seat. So let's back up to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? I will want to say, if it's Maryville Lakes, if it's something new, we'd love to hear it. If it's just reiterating what we've already heard, we have, as you heard, your last comments verbatim. And we are working on a number of things to see what we could do to help you residents, so. But please approach the microphone, name and address for public comment. I think he's okay, Craig. Thank you, though.
Praise the Lord, everyone. I, you know, forgive me, chief. I came here.
Mr. Fletcher, state your name, okay? State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Fletcher J. Williams. I'm at 8350 Grand Circle. From last Wednesday, my phone has not stopped ringing with everything that's going on. Last weekend and this weekend, they set and towed cars. There's a gray car, a red car, and a white car, where they changed cars. As I came out the garage, I sat and watched the tow truck. He observed me, and I waited five minutes. He did not take the car. He was wanting to know what I was going to do, and I wanted to know what he was going to do. He finally left, and I left. He went to the left, I went to the right, because I had to go to a meeting. But prior before that, and I want to thank the chief, because we called the police department. They came, generally on the spot. They was taking a gentleman's car. As the policeman approached, he told him, "Put the car down." He obeyed the policeman, and I assumed that he left. I didn't get all the detail. But tonight I came, all strapped with words and just to chew everybody out, because everybody's looking for an answer. But in the head, which is the head of the bathroom, Rick talked to me. And I guess, you know, when you pray to God, God give you the answer, one way or another. Rick talked to me, and he settled me down. And he said, "We're going to do something." And I believe Rick. The way he said it convinced me. But this young lady here, she also came over and started talking to me. I knew that they was coming out, because somebody had called Sabrina. So they cleaned the first floor and nothing else. We need help. And I honestly believe you, Rick, when you said you were going to come and help us. And I'm asking, don't mislead us, because I don't want to go back and tell the people something until I hear from you guys, okay? But I honestly, I was ready to get thrown out tonight, because I was all worded up. But the mold and stuff in the building, and I think it's in my apartment now, because I'm starting to get headaches. If we don't get help, I look at the people across the street. When the property going down, their property going down also. I believe what you said the last time we was here. They got your permission. But once people get people permission to do something, they back off, because there's no checking balance. I'm asking you folks to please, if there's no checking balance, let's get it started. We don't know who the owners are. You guys know who the owners are. If I know who the owners are, I would tell them personally. I can find people that can run this place much better than those that are... We need somebody who's in their 50s or 60s to be there, who can understand senior citizen. I can put a group together, ASP, that can run this place and get things done. When I heard the people from different contractors said they would not come in there and do any work, because they do not pay people. Well, Menard said they had a $30,000 work order, and they did not pay their bill, and then it went down to 1,500, and now it's down to $100. That's all that can go in charge. What is happening? People just don't care about senior citizen. You know, look at yourself, and look at your family. Look at your mothers and your fathers. Where are they going to be one day? Who's going to watch after you one day when you meet? I'm 78 years old. I'll be 79 September 18. It's unfair. You work all your life, and you're retired, and what do you have? Where can you go? You're pushed out. It's like, nobody gives a darn. I don't even use that word. That's a... I use... Excuse me for using that word. But I want you to know that we need help. And I have two more people that want to speak. I'm giving my time up for them. I got to run to the head also.
My name is Ernestine Barnes. I was here last week, well, the last time of the meeting. I am in 8500 Grant, and I am one of the residents. I'm kind of like a spokesman for some of the elderly that's there that have had problems. Some of the recent things that happened, we did come and say some of the things that's happened, but some of the things have progressively gotten worse. One of the young ladies that I am speaking for, she had mold in her house, and they came in and sprayed and then put bleach on it and left. And she has asthma, and so she's been back and forth to the hospital. We have tried to come to the office and talk about it, but nobody's listening. There is also mold that's in the hallway on the bottom floor. One of the managements came to, excuse me, came to clean, and she came at 9:00 in the morning. She didn't leave until 5:00 that evening and still did not clean.
Which building was that, Ernest?
This was 8500, Building B. I'm sorry. I'm in Building B. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That, she came in, she did the cleaning. We showed her where the mold was. Matter of fact, I got pictures. If you saw it, it's unbelievable. And she asked the maintenance guys to come in, and they walked out saying, "I'm not doing that. I'm not going to do that." And this mold been there for three months. We are talking about things that's actually been left there, and nobody's doing anything. The mold that was in another lady's house, she reported it, and they told her that they didn't have time to deal with it right then. They had other priorities. And that was not a priority. I also have respiratory myself, and now I've been back and forth to the doctor, because I'm developing, my respiratory is beginning to take place, and it's like it never happened before. And I found out there's mold in my house. So also, my question to you, and this is a cry for help for the seniors, because the seniors, especially the ones that's there with no limbs, and they can't move, they can't get down the stairs, you know, they take their time with the elevator. My question to you is, is that when I go into the office, I used to be an inspection rep. When I go into their office, I see no certificate or license at all. Nothing showing that they have permission to even operate. None. I also contacted the towing company, because I wanted to make sure about this towing. So I did my own research. Come to find out, when I asked the towing company, why are they towing? And who do they have a contract with? Now, DCSL is the management. The contract is between Sabrina and Mark. That is the maintenance guy. What do he have the right to have a contract with anything? He's a maintenance guy. So in all my researches, I find out a lot of things that what we're asking your help in, we need somebody to take a look at their books. They're taking money. And we got proof that they're taking money. We have that proof. But we need some help, some direction, and we need your support. These seniors cannot do this on their own. They need your help. Thank you.
Hang on a second, Ernestine. Kelly, go ahead.
Did you, have you guys called the health department as suggested by Councilman Minchuck on the last?
Yes, we did. We called. We followed that instruction. Some of them did come out. From my understanding, some of them come out?
I know, I know that... I know we sent some people out.
Yeah, I think that...
But have you, I mean, you guys were supposed to call the county health department like en masse.
We did.
Ask them to come and inspect. So do you, do you know whether or not the county health department came?
They have not came yet.
Okay, well...
Not to my knowledge.
We'll follow up on that for sure.
I have a question for Sheila, I guess, and in general, maybe to Joe on the business license ordinance. Multifamily dwellings, do they take out business licenses?
Yes.
They're a commercial entity?
Yes.
And so this operation does not have a business license?
It does not. I checked.
Not that, not that I seen.
So the people know part of the business license ordinance is to allow the fire inspector to go in with quote-unquote free rein and inspect everything. Make sure emergency lights are on, exit lights are on, along with the building inspector. That's why we charge them the fee that Kelly charges them out of the clerk treasurer's office and the business license that we're supposed to have.
We've made some progress in some of these areas, which we'll address, Sean, as soon as the last person speaks.
How often do they come out to renew their certificate, their license?
Kelly, they're mailed out in October to be paid in January.
Okay.
Daniel.
I don't see that they've ever had a business license, honestly.
No.
Yeah, I did some research on this, so they need to be fine.
Sheila, you shared some information with me about that.
About the business, I was not aware that they didn't have a business license, because they've been in existence for a while, Councilman Pettit. I do know that the... I do know that the process that we have in order now, when people get a new building or whatever. But, um, I was in contact with someone about the rental registration. That is, my office does handle that. They haven't, they have not responded to all of my letters, all of my phone calls to pay their rental registration fee.
Three years, right, Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But now my other question, I, I meant to mention. Far as in the fire, um, the, we usually try to, I've been trying to get the people together to do drills, we talked about that to them. Uh, when I went to look at the elevators, the elevators are expired for two years. In three of the buildings. I took pictures of that.
What about the elevator that they just repaired?
That, that one that they just repaired was from October 19 to December 19. It has not been renewed yet.
Well, Mr. President, a follow-up question to Sheila, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, Sheila, but you know, several of us were on the council and on the planning commission when this thing went through. What exactly did they, did we approve for them? Are they a PUD?
They are Plan Unit Development.
They're a Plan Unit Development. And one of the criteria is in Indiana code is the general safety, health, and welfare of the general public that we're supposed to judge that on. So again, I would turn back to Mr. Svetinoff and say, can we bring the PUD back for review and bring these owners in, whoever they are, in front of these seven members? We have the ability to bring back any special exception, use variance, or rezone that we deem appropriate if we get complaints from the taxpayers and the residents. This is, you know, we're, we're letting these guys... I hate to say, you know, I know you've been working on it, Rick, but that's one avenue. You know, that, that we can, I don't know if we revoke their PUD. But at least we put them on notice that the council's, you know...
Let's, let's let Joe speak to what's been done so far. He actually has some information to share with the residents.
I have, I have information for the residents regarding the housing and urban development. The Housing and Urban Development Department, um, has put out criteria regarding bad landlords, regarding federal housing projects, how to file complaints. I have all this information for whoever your designated representative is. I'll provide that information.
Okay.
I have done the research on that, and I do have that for you. A- as far as what we're talking about now, in terms of PUD a- and so, and the business license. We can certainly look into that and see what steps are appropriate there. But this is something that if you're able to get the Housing and Urban Development Department involved.
Okay.
They're a federal agency.
Right.
So anytime a federal agency gets involved. Local's one thing, but federal's at a much, county's at a higher level. But the federal government is state and then federal. That's gonna be at the highest level. And if you can get that Housing and Urban Development Department to come in and potentially get involved in this. Then it's gonna speak much louder than even we. We can speak. But they're gonna speak in volumes. Because at the end of the day, if the Department of Justice has to get involved, then that's a whole nother level. So, again, I do have this information for you. I will come down and meet with you after.
My, my other final question is that as far as their fire department, I don't, is the fire chief here? Okay. Well, um, I was going to the different buildings and I was looking at the smoke, smoke, uh, fire extinguishers. And they have, uh, proxy glass for, that's covering it where you can't break the glass to get to the... And all of the buildings are like this, and I was like, if a fire break out, how can we break proxy glass? So all of built, from Building A to Building D. All of these buildings have proxy, they have changed it to proxy glass. And when, when you read it, if you just walk and pass and you don't touch it, it looks like glass. But it says, "Please break glass." It's proxy glass. So that was another problem that we ran into, and I brought that to their attention. And I don't know, do this building supposed to have the pull fire things when there's a fire? You can pull the pulleys?
The alarms, fire alarms?
Yeah. There is none in none of the buildings. That, and I just, I said I've never seen buildings without a pulley.
Sheila, let's give Chief Erga a call. First thing in the morning, and let's get the fire department in there.
That was my question. Oh, my final thing, is there any, is there any way we can get the codes? Inspecting codes and building codes? Is that possible?
Sure.
Um, you, there's codes, like, I got a call from another building, 8400 Grant for GFI receptacles. And I sent the, the, um, electrical inspector out last week. However, there are codes for electrical plumbing, mechanical, and they come sold. And it's a lot, so you have to kind of hone in on which code you want us to... And we'll certainly get it to you.
Okay.
The code book is about this.
Yeah, I know. Do you, is there like a standard one that you, that you give for the, um, resident, not residents, but to the... Um, I know homes, residents, you can give standard coding, is it... Is that just only for the apartments complex like that? They're real thick?
No, you, you, you need to like address a certain issue, are you talking about, uh, uh, electrical outlet?
Electrical is one, though there's...
Electrical code, then they, they have, that's gonna be the National Electrical Code. If you're talking about a plumbing code, you're talking about the National Plumbing Code. And all of them are books like this, so if you have a specific issue. Then our inspector will address that issue.
Okay, well, it would, it would be electrical, there are some, like I said, I used to be an inspector. And we had to check the electric, and I'm seeing that is some electrical. I, I don't know if it's within your coding, and I need to check.
And because of the incident that happened in, I think it's Building D.
Yes.
We are looking into the, um, electrical problem out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Judy Stamps. I live in that Building D. And as you know, the fire started on September the 27th. I don't know if anybody really understands the magnitude of what happened on the 27th. Had not a resident walked by and felt the warmth and the heat on the floor. There would have been lives lost. I don't know if anybody really understands that. And the terror of that. I know many people think, "Well, why don't you move?" There are seniors in that building who can't afford to move.
No one's thinking that, Mrs. Stamps?
Yes.
Up here, no one's thinking?
There are people in there who came to live there. There are people who, who just want to be there. Because this is a nice town. We love it here. But had not a resident walked by and felt the warmth on the floor. There would have been death. Had not somebody came and practically knocked my door down to wake me up. There's no telling what could have happened. I heard no alarms. No alarms. At all. So we need to, you to understand where we are. We may not know what to do. We just need somebody point us in the right direction. I called some services. And they wanted everybody to call on the phone and fill out a form. And if you understand senior citizens, you know they weren't gonna do it. Because the fear of retaliation. Which is what is going on now. It is going on now. People are afraid to say anything. I just needed you to understand that. Lives could have been lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, did you have something?
Well, I did, but...
Okay.
I'm Carolyn Dickinson. And, uh, I also reside at the residences at Maryville Lake Apartments. And, um, my fellow tenant Judy is right. Is very emotional. Cuz we have been relegated to irrelevance. There's over 500 years of service that we've given. For me myself, 38 years with NIBSCO. I just retired three years ago. And it's embarrassing to stand before you. And make yourselves vulnerable and the witness of everyone here. And have to speak these things to you, but we desperately need help, we do. The retaliation that's going on. We reached out to Channel 7 News, the eyewitness team investigative. And the retaliation and pushback and backlash that came from that was unspeakable. People having notices put on their doors, senior citizens with Parkinson's disease. Having a notice put on their door that their lease was not going to be renewed. Some didn't even get that courtesy. They were just asked to leave. No reason was given. Others, their rent went up substantially. We signed a petition, everyone on that petition, you could pretty much go down that list as to whom was the victim of retaliation from this management. This management is unethical, inept, unjust, unfair. And the way they are treating us is absolutely disgraceful. I feel like I am residing under a slumlord. I have never lived under such conditions before. Never. There is no regard for our safety. There's no regard for fairness. They have instituted and implemented policies that are just absolutely unreal, invasive, intrusive. The parking policy that they just instigate, excuse me, implement it. Where no visitors now can park in front of our buildings. They have to park in back of our buildings where the dumpsters are. What they're calling remote parking areas. And trust me, they are remote. And they must walk around to the front of the building. And the terrain that they have to traverse is unshovelled, unsalted. Some of our tenants have fallen. One victim tore three ligaments in her arm and fractured her hip. And she is afraid to seek any type of legal assistance because of retaliation. This is what we're facing here. I've never in my life experienced anything like this before. This is a disgrace. And yes, I understand and I appreciate, um, Joseph, your suggestion. But we'd like to start with you first.
Well, that's fine, and see, the issue is with the building, is that you guys have a lot of different issues. And a lot of different jurisdictions have to be involved so that each entity can take care of those particular items that they take care of. So the mold issue, that's a health department issue. So we're gonna contact them and get them out there. Fire department, that's town. Believe me, we'll be in there for an inspection very soon. Um, so there's so many items, we had to kind of sort it out. Find out where we need to go and how to direct you to help you. Because the town just can't take care of all of those things, cuz we're not responsible for all of those things. I wish we were. We'd just fix it tonight. But we can't. So we have to guide you and help you. And that's what we've been working on, believe me, ever since you came out. Ever since first of the year, really. So, uh, Kelly's gonna speak to a couple of things that we're looking at. Mrs. Svetinoff's looking at some law, legal law, what we can do. Go ahead, Kelly. Thank you.
We had a meeting, um, last week, and, and what we did was try to assess from the things that you guys said, all of the areas that needed to be addressed, and what we could do specifically. Um, and so we have kind of a, a, a five-point plan that we are, uh, are looking at. I want you to know that there is an ordinance in Maryville that speaks to rent, rental housing permits and inspections. Um, and part of that ordinance does allow for us to fine them for retaliation. If they retaliate against you, residents. Because we had to come out and inspect and found that they were not, not up to code. We are looking to see about amending the ordinance so we can put more teeth into it than what it currently has. Increase the fines and see if we can, working with, uh, our attorney to see what other things we may be able to include, looking at some other ordinances from surrounding communities all the way down to Indianapolis to see if we can take some of the things that they are doing other places to place it into our ordinance to make it a tougher ordinance on the owners. The other thing that we've done is Ms. Shine has been able to, um, track down what we believe are the owners, and so we are sending them a letter from the town, a legal letter about the, the things that are going on and that we need to meet with them. I discovered, uh, in my office that they do not have a business license, so they're gonna be getting a letter about that. Um, and the fines, I'm gonna go, go back and look at how, how long we can fine them for how long they haven't had the business license. Um, as well as Ms. Shine has sent, um, letters about the rental, what's it called?
Rental registration.
Rental registration for the last three years. So we're looking at different ways to handle it. But one of the things that you guys are gonna have to do, because and, and I'm gonna tell you personally, I'm gonna reach out to some attorney friends of mine and see if they will speak with you and see if, if somebody... I've got some young attorney friends who are eager and ready to do some things, maybe can, um, sit down with you guys about trying to do maybe some type of group, maybe not class action, but group, um, litigation. Um, and maybe look again in the federal law as well as with our local law. So we're gonna do what we can here in terms of contacting the owner, fining them repeatedly. And so the ordinance allows for a fine for every, every issue of retaliation. And like I said, we're going to amend it to put some more teeth in it, but even right now, we can fine them. We just need you guys to, somebody has got to be able to step up and meet Ms. Shine or meet the inspectors when they come and say, "Hey, here's the mold. Here's the damage, here's the stuff." And I know you guys are afraid, but I mean, what I'm telling you is that legally you do have recourse. Okay, y'all not, alright, they're not scared, so... So now we have some people that we can contact because we need you to point it out. I mean, we just come on a surprise inspection. Of course, it's, it's clean cuz somebody's already told them we're coming. So we, we need you guys to work with Ms. Shine. When she sends people out, we're gonna contact the fire department, we're, we're looking at it. I just want you to know, we, we sat down, we've got a plan, it's just gonna take a little bit of time, okay?
This is not how we want residents to live in Maryville. I will say that. Okay? This is not.
Dennis is not nowhere to be found. Have we tried to track him down? I know where he lives. And I'm not gonna go to hold on.
Yeah, don't do that.
He's there and he's at no further. Gotta stay there. So I'm doing it though.
Yeah, don't do that.
Hi, uh, can I ask a question?
Sure, sir.
Please give us, give us your name and address.
Come up and approach, that's just, we have to get your name for the record, sir.
Hi, um, I'm Kirkland Springer, I live at 8350 Grand Circle in the D building. And my question is, being that it's a private property. Is it difficult to get things accomplished in terms of? For example, they men, they mentioned the elevator. The elevator been broken for almost nine days. Now, there's seniors in there that needs to get upstairs and downstairs. In my opinion, there should be a 24-hour maintenance contract or something like that. So when the elevator is broken, within six, seven hours, there should be somebody out looking at it. Now, since it's, it's a private property again. Is there some kind of guidelines or some kind of exception that they don't have to address certain issues? You know, I, I'm not sure. And these are some of the things.
The elevator is broken right now?
No, it's, it's working now.
Oh.
But for example, if it was to be broken tonight, it's possibly it's gonna be broken until next week. Right, it's not, um... Yeah, that's, that's the type of stuff we have to deal with. And as they mentioned, the tenants, a simple complaint, not really a complaint if the light fixture is out in the hallway. You're scared to actually place a service call. You know, because of retaliation like they mentioned, you know? Basically, it's total disrespect for the seniors.
We understand.
And that's basically what...
Yeah.
I could go on and on, but this is not a forum for that, so, so...
Mrs. Svetinoff, are you giving out the, are you gonna hand that to somebody, the federal guidelines or no?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, so, so, uh, uh, our attorney is gonna hand the federal guidelines, the things that he's found, uh, that you guys can go through.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Council, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
There's no other public comment, or is there?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean, no, I think, I thought everyone was done. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?